It is indeed a pleasure to have this privilege to play here for you. And we intend to give you a very fine program. So just settle back, relax and enjoy the moment.
Hey, good morning, Dee. Good morning, anyone watching on Facebook. Good morning. TGIF. I am going to make sure I have. Hey, what's up Denise on Twitch? Want to make sure I have a, hey, good morning AJ. Sucker free, um, sucker free Friday. Good morning, good morning, good morning, good morning. Yeah, um, so the priorities for today, um, and hopefully the video title. Hey Debbie, good morning on Facebook. Hopefully the video title, um, some folks saw that alert this morning. Um, I'm want to focus on something I touched on yesterday. So my primary focus will be on, um, uh, talking about the recent, the city's recent meeting on, um, the Commission on Equity, Inclusion and Racial Conciliation. We're going to just kind of dive into the, the reporting around that. So, so for those who don't know what it is, what this body was assembled to do, um, we're going to break that down. But you're going to, we're going to watch together in real time, watch the hearing now. When the hearing came on, I, I jumped in there real quick and jumped out because I just, I just couldn't. I was hearing some mess and, um, from our elected officials. And then yesterday, shout out to, um, Black Lives Matter here in Charleston. They reposted a news clip, um, from Live Five News that included commentary, good morning Whiskey Need, good morning, that included some commentary from those chosen to lead various, um, subcommittees uh, within the, um, now every time I have to avert my eyes because I never got this acronym, even though I was a member of the History and Culture Subcommittee led by chaired by Felice Knight, um, the Commission on Equity, Inclusion and Racial Conciliation. Um, we're going to get into that. This was something that when it was originally created, I was very critical of because I, because of, not because of who was heading it, shouting it, shout out to Amber, Amber Johnson. Not because of who was heading it, um, even though, so Amber, who leads, uh, a lot of these efforts, there's a whole city department created, um, to create this commission and do this work for the express purpose of, um, basically acknowledging the city's, uh, cruddy history, uh, with, uh, confronting its own past, owning its own past, its refusal to whitewash history, its refusal to stop, uh, you know, commodifying black pain and trauma via tourism practices, right? So this commission was created, um, for express purpose to address some of these disparities. Um, disparities outlining the Avery Institute study, uh, that was published years ago. That's still a rich document that you can pull from. Um, uh, making sure everything, okay, everything's good. If I can hear me, make sure, let me stop asking y'all that. Let me just see, okay. Um, but yeah, um, so I'll, I'll get into that, um, of course. Um, AJ, I know I saw you popped up. I'm not going to be able to spend a lot of time on, I'm going to, I'm gonna let AJ, um, AJ's clip kind of, kind of speak for itself. Let me see if I can pull it up and then I'm going to switch screens soon as I pull it up. I'm trying to, I'm trying to avoid a Facebook inception type deal because I'm streaming on Facebook right now. So sometimes it's, um, hold on before I switch screens, let me just see if I can get in here and get in my messages. And, um, I'm going to share something not related to today's topic, but I wanted to share this link. And if you are active on Facebook, you can, um, head to AJ's page, uh, and watch the video for more. It's about the, um, the South Carolina proviso. Okay, hold on one second. Close Facebook. I'm gonna mute this, um, mute this. All right, and I am going to switch up the screen. So we're going to talk about the South Carolina proviso and then we're going to hop back into the, um, the commission meeting and break down, um, really disappointing. If you hear a little like lack of energy in my voice, it's not lack of energy. I'm just really, I'm really exhausted, hay, cap'n glitter, really exhausted by our leadership in the city. And, um, they like to play in our faces. They like to play in our faces, uh, around, um, issues of racial justice, issues of, um, equity, um, when it comes to our history. And it's, it's always the, um, it's always the, the, the ones who, who really don't want to, to hide their disdain for, um, having to answer to grievances, grievances lifted by African Americans, by Gulag Gulag descendants. It's always the ones who don't do a good job of, of, um, concealing their racial animus. They're always the loudest ones and, um, I'm, I'm really disgusted by, and I know I've gone off on Ross Appel before, um, and I, I'm, I'm going to go off, but I'm going to go off in a different way this time. So anyway, let me just switch up to the SC proviso and then I'm going to encourage you all to please pursue this content outside of, um, the live stream. Let me switch up. Shout out AJ, good morning. Shout out AJ, so I'm gonna play a little bit and of course this is an hour, about an hour long. So we can't, we can't play the whole thing, but let's just give you a little sample. All right, I'm going to fast forward it.
Personal.
All right.
Of what's going on and what's happening, especially from a parent or student standpoint. Um, and so in preparation for.
So this AJ Davis, y'all, when you hear me shout out AJ on Facebook, this who this is. Um, AJ of the Community Solutions Consulting Situacion. Um, I don't know if you want AJ, I don't know if it's an organization or if you, I mean, it's a, it's a, I don't even know what you are, 501(c)(3) or not. I know you're something, but, um, AJ from Community Solutions Consulting.
Or, uh, the upcoming school year, uh, one of the things that I discovered, um, pretty much by accident really, uh, was an article that I posted on my personal Facebook page today regarding, um, the state of Tennessee having a, a fine, levying a fine for, um, teachers who are caught teaching what they perceive to be, uh.
Critical race theory.
Critical race theory. And in that article, one of the things that I found out was that there, there's a listing, there's a map of where critical race theory is and, and, and where it's under attack. And so one of the things that I, uh, I just did a little bit of digging and, and looked at the map and I found that South Carolina is actually on that map.
Get out of here.
Which was surprising because I, I don't remember any laws actually being passed. I do know that there were a couple of bills. Uh, but what I found out was, um, that once again, South Carolina, uh, voters and, um, constituents were duped again during the budget process. And for those who are wondering what I mean, a couple of years ago, I want to say around 2019, uh, there was a proviso slipped in the, uh, state budget by a local state Senator, Sean Bennett, that allowed for the creation of what is now known as schools of innovation. That potential, that particular proviso led to a very, um, controversial series of events with people like myself, uh, feeling as though the way it was done was not above board and put, uh, black schools at a disadvantage. Well, fast forward two years, two years. And now with all the rhetoric surrounding critical race theory and us watching states like Texas, um, and Georgia and other southern states, other, uh, conservative states, um, basically attacking everything that is, uh, a discussion or a conversation about race and inequality. Um, they've even put in a social emotional learning SEL. And now the idea of talking about the, the disparities in America from an educational or academic standpoint have been put under attack. So in researching, I found out that, and I'm gonna scroll here. I found out that, um, South Carolina in this year's budget, this year's budget.
Okay, okay.
They slipped in basically a bill that I read earlier in a live about how they were trying to call it partisanship curriculum. Well, guess what ladies and gentlemen? They slipped it in during the budget discussion. So I'm going to put it up here on the screen so you can see. So if you can read at the bottom, this is in the South Carolina state budget. And, and I want to pause here for a minute because I know that a lot of people who follow education, they were talking about, you know, the fact that the, uh, budget has a proviso that prohibits schools from mandating, uh, masks, right? So that, that got a lot of attention, you know?
And shout out Paul Bowers on, on Twitter, y'all. I'm going to encourage y'all to check out Paul Bowers on Twitter. He was been, he's been following and tweeting about this. I think two days ago, you can find it. Um, he'd been tweeting and going, not going back and forth, but highlighting some, some of the details, uh, disputing maybe even some of the things expressed by Attorney General Allen Wilson and the, um, Majority Leader, uh, you know, um, at the State House, the Republican Majority Leader. Some comments there as well, um, about this, about the mask thing, the whole mask. Can, can, can schools mandate that you wear masks? You know that if you've been watching state news, you've seen Columbia Mayor, um, Benjamin come out and make, uh, you know, create some ordinances around masks and the wearing of masks with the Delta variant being such a, a threat. Um, so follow Paul Bowers on that part as well. Hey Johnny James on Twitch, good morning Johnny James on Twitch. Um, you says, um, you do, you say you do S, SEL. I'm begging the state to find you, right? Okay, so Johnny James, you say you do, um, SELs, that social emotional learning that AJ just referenced? And you said you're begging the state to find you. They will never get anything from me. I, I hear you with that.
Because a lot of folks were like, oh, you know, that, that is a public health menace. Well, that's not the only thing they slipped in regarding education. So this is 1.105. And for those who are interested and want to see the full document where this information is pulled from, inbox me and I will make sure to give you the link because I was blown away that this was there. So it's SDE, which is State Department of Education, partisanship curriculum. And if you remember, if you follow me, there was a bill that was sitting in the state legislature. It may, in May, I believe if I'm not mistaken, uh, Lynn Bennett might have been one of the authors, but I believe that there were a couple. And these bills are around the country, okay? You see these bills in several conservative Republican-led dominated states. This is the South Carolina version and it, it pretty much mirrors all these others. So I'll read it. For the current fiscal year, of the funds allocated by the Department of Ed to school districts, no money shall be used by any district or school district or school to provide instruction in, to teach, instruct or train any administrator, teacher, staff member or employee to adopt or believe or to approve for use, make use of or carry out standards. Hear that, carry out standards, right? Standards are what guides how teachers are allowed to teach certain subjects in any, in any academic environment, public school environment. So notice they said carry out standards. So even if something is set in the standard, they're saying it can't be done. But let's, let's go further. Curricula, lesson plans, textbooks, instructional materials or instructional practices that serve to inculcate.
Inculcate.
Any of the following concepts, all right? This is where it gets in. One, one race or sex is inherently superior to another, right?
This get, okay, I know I'm acting like I'm talking to AJ. I'm acting like this is like us on Zoom. This shit right here, right here. Thanks for dropping additional links in the Facebook chat, um, AJ. This is the kind of, but see, this is the type of pouring over of legislation that I live for. This is the type of civic engagement that I live for. You know, when, when somebody like Ross likes to diminish your voice, like mine, they're in effect diminishing a voice like AJ's as well. Um, someone who's been in these schools for so long and who has served this very specific purpose right here, help illuminate little hidden details. This is the power of, this is civic engagement, y'all, right? Like I just, like, this is what we need. We need someone to pour over these things. This is not my wheelhouse. This is not my wheelhouse and I've relied so much on these trusted voices for, for years, for years, um, to help illuminate some of these details. And this is the little things, the minutia that slips through the cracks that we don't catch on until it's too late. And then we get admonished for not being proactive, but you slipped it in. Just like you rushed a meeting to, to drastically infringe upon people's first amendment rights. City of Charleston, they slipped this in, here you go with the state leadership slipping in his language, slipping in his language, uh, tying teachers' hands essentially on teaching on things like race or anything. And, and, and the standard part is going to be the interesting part because it feels so subjective, AJ, in terms of like someone could, could, could report an instructor or someone could cite an instructor. It feels like it's so subjective at that. This is real and it's going to impact more than Charleston area schools. This is going to impact, you know, everyone, every, every kid, every family, every schoolhouse, essentially.
Let go down here.
Right, race to sex, yeah.
An individual by virtue of his race or sex is inherently racist, right? An individual by his race or sex is inherently racist, sexist or oppressive, whether consciously or unconsciously.
Sexist or oppressive?
An individual should be discriminated against or receive adverse treatment solely or partly because of his race or sex. Four, an individual's moral standing or worth is necessarily determined by his race or sex, right? Five, an individual by virtue of his race or sex bears responsibility for actions committed in the past by other members of the same race or sex.
Okay, I'm gonna stop it there. AJ, you killing it. Uh, I'm gonna stop it there just because I want to make sure, um, I move forward. Let me just read your comments. No, you're fine. I didn't mean to correct you. My, my, I do that all the time. You did, you did great. As many words I did, as many words as I mispronounced on this damn live stream. No, here I am trying to, trying to like read one word. No, you good. Um, it's, it's criminally ambiguous. That's a great term. It's criminally ambiguous. So like I said, go to Facebook, y'all. If you're not friends with AJ, if he can take more friends, uh, send him a friend request. More importantly, check out this video, uh, that he did, uh, he posted about a, a day ago, all right? And look at the chat and you'll probably read some good comments from people that you'll, from some familiar faces, some familiar voices, um, from, from our, uh, our comments here. So take your time with that and, and do that for sure. Thank you AJ, um, I'm sorry I didn't get to it yesterday. I, I could have did this yesterday, but, um, we're going to keep, and we're not done here. We're going to continue to talk about, because I'm going to go back and watch in full. I'm gonna let this play while I'm, you know, so I can listen to the entire live stream, um, AJ. And then I want to continue to kind of talk about this and then engage maybe if, if y'all are willing. I don't mean to volunteer, volunteer y'all, but if a Joy Brown, if a Mev, if a Anna Marx want to come and contribute to this conversation around this specific proviso, I'd be extraordinarily, um, happy to take any information you got on that to help, uh, build out the broader discussion about it, okay? Um, so thank you again AJ and thank you for your, your hard work. You, you and I both know how like it can feel like we just screaming into the void in terms of trying to advocate and illuminate certain issues. Um, but your, your, your words are being heard, um, loud and clear. And I'm going to continue to amplify your words and others who, um, join this live stream every morning to make sure that we prioritize education. I will say this, I will say this, as, as a graduate of Charleston County Public Schools, okay? As a St. Andrews Rock, I will say this, um, this is very serious, this is very dangerous, this is very, this is going to have all kinds of consequences that we, we can't even imagine. But I will say this, y'all consistent as hell. Because that's exactly how it felt like our education, like my education on, on the, um, the period of enslavement, um, our, our role in the transatlantic slave trade. My education, three years here in Charleston County Public Schools and high school, um, basically mirrored that, that proviso, that language within that proviso. You know, literally I've said this one time, I say, I'll say it over and over again. You know, I've had my, my history teacher, Mr. Barnwell, tell me that, you know, unless slaves run away, their life wasn't bad. They were actually happy on plantations. They were happy. And I remember, I remember my classmate Carolyn, I can't remember Carolyn's last name, but she, last name, but Carolyn was cute. She always had her hair cut and it's real fly cut. And Carolyn was like, don't sugarcoat it. I remember, and I remember saying, damn, I wish I was as brave as Carolyn. She's like, don't sugarcoat it. And then you heard like the other black students say the same thing. And you know, I'm, I'm shy and I'm, and I'm, you know, whatever and I'm, and I, but I was like, damn, I wish I would have said, I wish I would have backed Carolyn up. I remember to this day, I remember that because there, at least there was a dissenting black voice or two within the class to say, hey, hold up, slaves weren't just happy if they didn't run away. Like they didn't just face punishment if they ran. They faced, you know, violence and, and, and all that was the incentive to, for, for increased production, right? It's capitalism. And so, um, I say all that to say, the approach to teaching about our, about, um, our nation's shameful past, about the genocidal tactics employed to, uh, remove, um, indigenous communities, not removed to kill, murder, uh, you know, to, to, to just steal their land. The genocidal tactics that were employed, we never talked about here. Slavery was talked about as if we're just, um, we were just laborers, you know? Um, it, it, it's so, it sounds like the proviso is just reinforcing what I was exposed to and giving language and, and legal, a legal framing, um, for some pretty heinous, um, shenanigans. I don't know what other word I can use. Uh, AJ, you went on to say that the fact that no school districts are making this information known. Yep, you know, it's, it's concerning, right? Hey Dee, hey, and I see you Johnny James. Um, thank you for dropping your, your comments in the chat as an educator. Hey Kia, um, good morning to you. Um, Dee, you says having both these voices, oh, thank you. I appreciate it Dee, thank you. She's, um, lifting up both me and you AJ. Um, and then Dee, you said the kicker for you is that, the part, um, that says you can't, uh, that you can't hold in an individual accountable for racist behavior done by their predecessors, right? It's the lost cause 2.0. It is, I've heard that and I've heard that someone referenced lost cause about this. Um, we're talking about this issue before as well. You hit it out the park. All right, so thank you awkward transition, not too awkward. Um, but we want to go from the South Carolina proviso, state level, state level leadership disappointing us to city level leadership disappointing us. Um, like I said, I said this at the beginning, for those who just came back to the live stream, welcome. Good morning, it's mic'd up in the morning with Mika Gadsden, ah, ah, ah. So, um, what I want to do is talk about the recent Commission on Equity, Inclusion and Racial Conciliation meeting that took place on the fourth, that's two days ago, on the fourth. Um, and so first of all, I'm gonna have to hop out of Facebook real quick just to read, um, just to read my text messages that I, text messages that I received since, since the meeting happened. Um, and it, yeah, it was, it was, it was a mess. Um, so let me see if I want to say this, let me see right there. Mm-hmm, so we're going to talk about some of the, the, so yesterday I pulled up the document. Let me pull it up again. Yesterday I pulled up the document and I, and I also played the news clip about it as well. Let me pull up the document that I downloaded yesterday. Let me see, downloads. Y'all should see how many PDFs I downloaded. Boom, boom, okay. Close that out. So this was the document. We go to the beginning. I, I, I kind of, I think y'all saw my initial responses as well. I was, I'm very, it's a draft, but I'm very disappointed in how it was styled and whatever. Um, I told you that I felt like the font was really big. So I feel like it's not really that dense of a document. Um, that font is big, y'all. So I, I don't know, it just didn't feel like a dense document. And, um, I was on the History and Culture Subcommittee. One, and I, and I was kind of questioning like, where's the meat of all of our, our work? With one bullet, we're the only Subcommittee with one bullet mark, one, one bullet point. And arguably, I, I'm gonna make, I'm gonna say this real quick. Arguably, History and Culture is one of the most important Subcommittee's in that. In that the reason why I joined the Subcommittee specifically was that I knew that culture, culture can help shape attitudes and we're going to get into some of the work I've done simultaneously, right? So at the time I'm on this committee right here, right? Over months and months of work, I was taking minutes, um, for, for our Subcommittee. I was very engaged. I missed one meeting, I think my birthday trip. I think I may have missed one or, and like a half or something like that. Um, I was very engaged, I was present. Um, I learned a lot from Lee Pringle. I learned a lot from Lee Burbage. I learned a lot from, um, Dr. Lisa Hendricks from, from the Citadel. I learned a lot from Dr. Felice Knight. I learned a lot from Sean Halifax, from, from our county park system. These are just some of the people that were on this Subcommittee. I learned so much from them. Um, and I was the activist voice there to kind of just advocate for a bolder vision, right? And so I just didn't think this was reflective of the, of the work, even though this is just, you know, somewhat of a summary. I didn't think this was reflective of, of the work that we all participated in. I want to scroll down just to prove that I was there, that, you know what I mean? I'm a part of it, it's one, just going to get, get the facts. Let me go on down. And then we're going to get right into, damn, we're going to get right into the, um, History and Culture, here's our piece right here. Then we're going to get right into, is it like, oh, did I, no, it's, it's a long document. It's a long document, damn. Hold on. Here we go. Here we go, acknowledgements. And there I am right here, if y'all can see it. Let me see, blow it up. All right. So that's Health and Disparities. I'm trying to scroll down. History and Culture, so I'm on there again chaired by Felice Knight, co-chaired by Angela Mack. Interesting, um, I, I wanted, I, this was a privileged position for me to, to work closely with somebody from the Gibbs Museum. Um, yeah, it was interesting, um, Angela. I think Angela tries, she's a white woman, right? I think she tries hard. I think she has the right perspective, but there's some, there's some more vision and leadership that I, I, I really want from somebody from the Gibbs. But I think, um, I was pleasantly surprised often with Angela's input. Um, and I'm grateful that she, that Dr. Knight chose her to co, to, to co-chair or to vice chair. Vanessa Haleyard, uh, a citizen, someone who's just has so many memories. And, and she created her own, um, she created her own archive. Um, this is a woman of a certain age, a black woman, who brought back all kinds of memories from my father because I would take notes from what Vanessa offered and get to go to my dad. I'm like, dad, did you remember this? Did you see this? Did you know this person? And, you know, stirred up a lot of memories, you know, just, just a walking archive. Vanessa is Lee Pringle, amazing. Um, that's me, Dr. Alicia Hendricks, Sean Halifax. It was just, it was, it was a really interesting Subcommittee, right? All right, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna back out. And I just want to go up here real quick, real quick, real quick. Let's see, we can get like a little abstract real quick. So y'all understand what this is. Okay, Commission, Commission Overview. And then we're going to get into the video, right? We're going to get into Ross acting a mess. Um, I'm going to, first I'm gonna take a screenshot, close this out and then I'm gonna go back to Facebook. So I can see if Facebook is chatting. Good morning Facebook, if you're chatting, drop me something in the, in the chat section. Hey, good morning, who's this? Okay, that's real wild, the wild new follow. Good morning, um, good morning Dr. Claw. You said, uh, Pringle Burbage, hearing those names made me think I'm back in the low country. Let me tell you them names, Pringle Burbage, White Mitchell, Green, Brown, Gadsden, Singletary, there's some names that just scream, that screams, uh, low country, Dr. Claw, to your point. All right, so let me, this, let me just read this abstract, the, the overview. On June 9th, 20, June 9th, 2020, John Teklenburg, so this is after the uprisings, y'all. John, uh, Mayor John Teklenburg and the City Council voted to create a special commission on equity, inclusion and racial conciliation, S C E I R C. All right, the S E C I R C was charged with making the city's apology for slavery and Jim Crow more than just a promise, but rather a commitment to revealing and dismantling systemic racism through po- policy level change. Hmm, I just want y'all to know this, this commission wasn't funded. So when you talk about creating policy level change, this commission wasn't funded. Let us proceed, this is, this is a bunch of, we were volunteers. Let me proceed. Okay, policy level change. Specifically, the commission is focused on, uh, the creation of measurable outcomes, promotion of greater accountability and coordination of community-wide efforts to achieve racial equity in our community, okay? The following set of recommendations are a result of a collaborative effort of six city council members and over forty volunteers. The commission is structured into seven Subcommittee's. Criminal Justice, Economic Empowerment, Criminal Justice, Economic Empowerment, Health Disparities and Environmental Justice, His, History and Culture, gang, gang. Housing and Mobility, Internal Review and Youth and Education, City of Charleston. Staff, Health and Education, excuse me, period. Excuse me, Youth and Education, Youth and Education, excuse me. City of Charleston staff from a variety of departments assisted with the administrative support as well as key guidance. So in our group, Scott Watson, shout out Scott Watson. Had a little titty-tat, a little titty-tat. That's, remember I talked about, um, Maury Hogan, who writes for Austin Culture for the Post and Courier. That's, his, his wife is Maury Hogan. Um, yeah, I've, I've had, I've been very critical. I wasn't alone in my criticism, um, of the city sometimes. Um, and there was a little bit of like, little bit of like awkwardness there. Whether or not he acknowledged it or not, there was awkwardness there. Um, but hopefully people get, get me now, but it doesn't matter if they don't. But yeah, so Scott Watson was our, uh, our city appointed, you know, a city, a city staffer that was, um, assigned to our group, right? So these are the Commission members. Um, we kinda talked about this yesterday. Shout out, I'm gonna tell you my, who my personal friends are. I only got like one personal friend on here. No, I got two. Shout out to Alvin. Let me go, let me make it smaller. Shout out to Alvin Johnson. Alvin Johnson right here, an engineer. All right, Jerome Harris, Kim, Dr. Kimberly Butler. We're gonna hear from Dr. Kimberly Butler Willis in a second. Right, Felice Knight comes from a prestigious black family here in Charleston. Tracy Duran, don't know her. Darren Lee Calhoun of the Avery, uh, of Avery Institute. And, uh, Ms. Crystal Robertson-Rouse, that's my girl right there. That's my friend. Um, very unimpressed with Dudley's involvement. Encouraged by Sacran's, um, involvement. We gonna see Ross show his ass. Don't know much about the rest, right? And we know that Harry Griffin was removed from this after, uh, his comments about his colleagues, after his involvement with the Proud Boys. And then Harry tried to attack, attack me. He didn't say my name, but he attacked me when there was vote, when they were voting to remove him from this committee. Cause like with the apology, Harry liked to embed himself like the bedbug he is. And then at the end of it, vote against the initiative, vote against the anything, right? Even if it was in the best interest of the city, yada, yada, yada. Um, right, based on, just cause, because racial animus is, 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 is Harry's jam. All right. So let's go to the video. Now, we not watching the whole thing together, but we gonna get, we gonna watch enough. And, um, oh, you know what? Matter of fact, let's go to Live Five News and play that clip. Play that clip from Dr., um, Butler, Kimberly Butler. It was yesterday's news, so I know I have to scroll. Let me just put it in here. Stop playing. What is it? Special Commission on Race Equity, Inclusion, Racial Consiliation. I can never get this acronym. All right, let's see if they came up. That's crazy. Matter of fact, you know what? I know BLM posted it. Let me stop hustling backwards. I know they posted it. Let's see if we can watch it here. If we can.
We should not negotiate with races.
Okay. Turnbuckle with it. Okay, so this is, this is the group, this is the meeting we're about to watch. This is Kimberly Butler Willis, Dr. Kimberly Butler Willis speaking.
Just like the government says, we do not negotiate with terrorists. We should not negotiate with races. If we are truly looking to move our society, our community past where it has been.
Dismantling systemic racism in the city of Charleston. 125 recommendations unveiled tonight. On their way to City Council members now to promote racial justice and racial equity in the holy city. But they could face some hurdles ahead. Kaitlyn Stansel has been digging through the new draft reform from the city's Special Commission on Equity, Inclusion and Racial Consiliation. Some 500 pages. Kaitlyn, what is?
Yeah, with jumbo font.
Issues are likely to come up when this goes before Charleston City Council in about two weeks.
Well, Ross, Charleston City Councilman Ross Appel cautioned his fellow Commission members tonight that some terms in that draft report could cause the city's council to reject their recommendations altogether. But others say they're ready for the challenge.
The word reparations, the word critical race theory, the world, the phrase 1619 project. Okay, um, I'm concerned that those words could be a problem when this hits the floor of council.
Commission member Ross Appel says he's worried the Commission's draft report could lose council's support if those terms are kept. But other Commission members say the words are necessary to accomplish the report's goal of overthrowing systemic racism in Charleston.
Hey qualified black people, many of which are credentialed and have way more education than I do. This is me being Ross, right? Hey, black people and foreign black people, uh, astute black people. Hey, I know we've asked you to solicit, you get to, to offer up your expertise for free, for free, for over several months. But, um, I'm gonna just lift up some bullshit I heard on Fox News and actually float out a narrative that ain't even really what this is about. So you already set us up for failure. Good job, Ross. You're awesome.
And when we start to eliminate some of the words that are actually factual, like critical race theory, we.
Let me tell you something. It's already, y'all, it's already, not watered down, cause I'm not gonna, uh, impugn like the, the level of work. I'm not gonna sit there and attack what we did. But it's already, like, it's an unpaid commission. It's volunteer led. Like, it's already real, like benign. There were vice chairs that were white. There were certain subcommittees not led by just black people. Like, what are you talking about? What are you talking, like, like, what are you, like, what more, how many more concessions you want people to make? God.
We are indeed whitewashing. And so this is a document that's not centered in the white experience. And it will make you feel uncomfortable. But it's in that uncomfortableness that I hope that we can move forward.
The report includes 125 recommendations, including better police accountability, raising public and private funds to pay for $100 million in slavery reparations, and supporting cultural competency work and changes to school-based curriculum.
We can't be afraid of words.
Come on, Alvin.
We gotta get real and we gotta take it head on.
Commission members have spent more than a year researching and forming these recommendations to rebuild the city of Charleston as a quote actively anti-racist government.
We came into this intentionally trying to dismantle systemic racism within the city of Charleston. We have to do that.
That draft report will now go before the city's full council on August 17th, where if it's accepted by council members, its 125 recommendations will be sent to their appropriate city council committees for consideration. Now, not every recommendation will make it back to full council for final approval. Back to you, Ross.
Right, so, oh, let me see if there's any more left.
All right, Kaitlyn, thank you very much. Other recommendations include increasing the number of high-quality.
Okay, all right, so they stopped it there. All right, so shout out to BLM for posting that. Marcus is on, was on the environmental and, uh, justice, uh, commit, committee. Um, and what I want to do, I'm getting, Miss, Miss Comparing Apples to Oranges. I am going to show you, A, what I've been a part of, working with Policy Link, which is based out of, uh, California, about the, around the Bay Area, Oakland area. I'm gonna talk, but they do, they, they help to, you know, influence policy, federal policy around environmentalism, leveraging arts and culture, right? So I'm, I'm, I'ma revisit some of that work that I've done, right? That I was enlisted to help be a part of. Then I'm also gonna show you what happened after Freddie Gray. So again, this commission was created, um, in June following the uprisings that took place downtown. I'm gonna show you what a thoughtful response, even if it's imperfect, what a thoughtful response or what a really meaty and substantive response looks like, um, in another city that's dealing with racial unrest and dealing with, uh, folks feeling, um, disenfranchised and brutalized by the system, right? So I'mma show you the differences today. But let's get into the, the commission meeting and let's try to get to some of the juicier parts. Oh, boy.
Hello, I'll, I'll be able to turn on my camera.
All right, let's get through the preamble. Yeah, yuck, 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 yuck. Let me see.
We could just bow our heads.
They really do be praying. Y'all really be praying, like, let me stop. I gotta remember I'm in Charleston. Okay. Shout out John Mitchell, who's no longer with the city, but who, from what I hear, advocated that I would not be excluded from the History and Culture Subcommittee. Um, cause I know that people didn't want me on there. Imagine, imagine, like, listen to the beginning. Imagine being okay with Harry Griffin being on it, but being upset that an activist will join a community, a community member will join the committee. Ain't that something? And this, before, yeah, before the Proud Boys, but Harry still was Harry.
Uh, any discussion on those minutes? There's no discussion. All in favor, please say yes.
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 All opposed? Awesome. The motion passes. The minutes are approved. We're gonna move on to our final report. And I just want to say a few words and then, then I'm, then I would probably encourage Amber and Dudley to chime in.
There you go Dee. I see that last comment.
It's been a long year for, for us and certainly COVID has exacerbated some of the challenges, but.
So, oh, so Elise, I'm right, real quick, um, Elise, excuse me, Ally, I read your last name. Ally on Facebook, you said you're the Chair of the Criminal Justice City Orders Committee. I didn't know that. Okay. Ally, you also said, let, let me know if y'all need, uh, need that, what, which things you need to change. I got you. AJ, you said, um, so now we know that he is one of the people who is anti-CRT, right? Yep. Uh, I knew you would find that part very, very helpful, um, AJ.
I just want to say, as, as we prepare for, to submit these final recommendations.
I see you, B man.
And the work of this special commission concludes this portion of its work. Uh, I just want to say I'm really proud of what we accomplished this year. And along the way, I do want to acknowledge that some felt we were moving too fast. While others felt we were moving too slow. And we had some say, some naysayers and a few that became disenchanted along the way. But more importantly, I do want to recognize those who understood that anything this important and this complex and really this historic, it's not a linear process and it does get messy and it does get uncomfortable. Um, I want to say personally, I've been honored and humbled to co-chair this special commission with Dudley.
Okay, I'mma fast forward a little bit. Do you hear a little bit? I will say Jason's leadership, um, inoffensive, right? I didn't have any issues with it. I think he took it seriously. At the most, if, if they're not gonna be like 100% of everything you want in a commission leadership type of, of structure, at least take it seriously. And I got the impression that Sacran took it seriously. I got the impression and I skipped through it, that Dudley just, this was just a toy for Dudley. In the beginning, he said, the first thing he said, matter of fact, this is, we can fast forward and remind real quick. This is the first thing Dudley said out of his mouth. This shows you his attitudes.
Hello, I'll, I'll be able to turn on my camera.
Hold on, one second.
Just a minute. Good to see everybody.
Good to see you too. Take your time.
Listen to Dudley's appro, this is Dudley's approach to this.
We're hoping this won't last that long, folks.
Three hours, right, Dudley?
Uh, no. No way. We all have read this thing inside and out.
Dehydrated ass. All right. I'm just over it. I'm just over it. All right, I'm trying to get to when some other screens light up, specifically black people that are not Dudley or wearing. So I'm looking at the screen. Hold on, I'm gonna fast forward, fast forward. And then, gotta see. That's wearing. Nope, don't want to hear from him. Who is, that's going back, Carol Jackson. Felice, they taking attendance or something? Let's see what's going on.
Then we can move on. Okay? Anyone that has suggestions for pictures, I think, send them to Amber. Amber will then get all those pictures out.
So there was an issue with the pictures, real quick.
Right. And then I think.
This is my, this is my chair.
Uh, Avery has a lot of images we can use.
Okay. So, so this is, this is actually substantive. This is what I wanna, I wanna, I wanna hit on this.
And, and they all had to be publicized and, you know, on YouTube or whatever we did, recorded them. So I, I'm really grateful to the honesty and the integrity.
As she's talking, y'all, let me pull this back up. As she's, as Carol's talking.
Being part of the process that makes this real. Thank you very much.
Look at the pictures. That's not a high-quality image. It's, I mean, it was.
Anyone else, anyone else.
Let me not say that. This is the pictures. Let me just show you all the pictures.
I think at this point in the agenda, we are to discuss the final report. Does anyone have any substantive, um, opinions, changes, edits? Anything they want to add to, to the final report?
Let me show you some more.
And then, uh, Dr. Knight?
Before we even get to the substance of the report, which is the most important part, I do have a few changes I would, um, love to see. First, the picture of Dr. O.
Come on.
Um, I feel as if we need to make that change. Particularly, I, I don't know if, uh, if Dr. O reading this and, you know, face to my brother. Uh, whether he'll want, just like his face being the pic, had the image of this, just that actually positively needs to change. Um, and then also even just looking at the photos of it. Um, the second picture is a picture from the Avery Research Center archives. Um, and I think it was mentioned that it came from the Post and Courier, but that's definitely from the Avery's archives. Um, there's no attribution for that, but then we, um, I would, uh, we can get attribution for that, but then also even if we pulled an archival image from the Avery or from any other archival repository outside of Charleston for that initial picture, I would definitely suggest making those changes. But I just wanted to get those out before we can.
The Avery is right there. So overlooked, such a, such an amazing resource, historical resource here. And the Avery is oftentimes not the go-to at all, right? It, it just really boggles my mind.
As we get to the, uh, substance, which is the most important part.
Darren?
Darren? Okay, can I, can I, can I amplify that? Uh, the, um, the middle passage, um, image, um, has emotional, um, emits a particular emotional piece from African-descended people. This report is not only designed to attract and engage African-descended people. Uh, and the cover should, I believe, invite other folks in.
Well, I don't know.
And I don't believe, um, that, that particular image does that. Um, that was a, a concern I had and associated with, besides my own emotional response to it. And thank you, Darren.
I think that's a fair observation in terms of that, but what I really don't, what I really, I don't know, I'mma keep my, my ears got perked up, cause we do this All Lives Matter thing. And I do get that this commission wasn't just about, um, addressing black people, which I think is a missed opportunity, honestly, to create a legislation or policy prescriptions or anything that just explicitly advocates for black people. I, I don't know why that's such a bad thing. But here, I even knew going into this, that this wouldn't just be about. And I lifted up in my History and Culture Committee Subcommittee, I lifted up that we should include indigenous folk and Latinx folks. We should have a more, um, inclusive, um, cause we wanted to talk about more monuments and, and, um, recounting the history of, of a lot of people of color who've contributed to this city, who've made contributions to this city, whose leadership was critical to this city's, um, you know, success. And so while I say that, I also champion at the same time for there to be explicit language around black, black people, descendants of, of, of slavery, right? But black people, Gullah Geechee specifically, Black Indigenousity is not something that we talk about, we lift up or that we contextualize in any of our historical renderings downtown or wherever, in the mainstream, in the mainstream, right? And so outside of the Avery or what have you, maybe, and then the, the museum, of course. But we don't necessarily, we don't lift up Gullah Geechee culture. We still treat it like fringe culture. We still treat it like, like, you know, some, some nameless homeless, uh, you know, languageless type of, 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 of culture. And still created, it's still treated like a subculture. And I don't know why, like, we don't lift up Gullah Geechee heritage. We got something that no one else has. We got something that no one else has. And yet we keep burying it and putting it in this whole melting pot. It's okay to, to, to champion and lift up Gullah Geechee culture. It's okay. I don't know why we don't stress that enough. And that just, that irritates me. Hey, what's up, Rizan?
I mean, we're not, I'm sorry, we're not hard-length to any pictures. We just need some suggestions on, on what may replace it.
Uh, Avery has a lot of images we can use.
Come on, Darren.
We can get some, uh, we can license those.
They could've, they could've just had an Avery, um, intern pool. You know, Darren could've, he's like, hey Darren, can you get Avery interns to pull? You know, Darren could have, he'd be like, hey Darren, can you get Avery interns to pull images that do A, B, C, D, E, and G, right? E, F, G. So the commentary from someone who's pictured here, well, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna say their names, but someone who's pictured on this screen sent me some feedback. It says, we told them, do not use those damn pictures to make the report look connected, and they put "connected" in quotation marks. Alright. And it says, accept, accept the document so you can retweet it. This is some of her comments, I think that she was watching. So you can, can tweak it with the appropriate framing and recommendation. Some, okay, I'm not gonna say that other one. But, so she meant, they mentioned Ross speaking for himself about the CRT 1619, etc., etc., is real. Ain't nobody sugarcoating this stuff. Right, right, so they, she's pushing, but she's saying the pushback was real, nobody's gonna sugarcoat this stuff. Okay?
I will send some over if need be.
Yeah, thank you, Darren, and I also sent an email to you, Councilman Gregory, Councilman Sacran, and Amber Johnson, with a couple of suggestions from the Low Country Digital Archive that was sent several weeks ago now. So I would encourage you, I know everyone gets tons of emails, but I would encourage you to perhaps take a look at that and definitely connect with Darren because getting right to the pictures would be, I think, probably more straightforward from Avery than even from the Low Country.
You got Avery, the Low Country Digital Archive, and you've got Cecil Williams is still kicking, still kicking, like, you know, out, up in Orangeburg. Like, there's so many ways you could have went about this. And again, this is important for you all to understand, like, the lack of, to me, the lack of seriousness, I believe that some of our elected officials bring into these processes, and I'm not just trying to bash them, I'm trying to give, give credit where credit is due, I'm trying to say that at least Sacran took it seriously. I know his opening comments didn't really instill a lot of confidence, like, it didn't really, like, make, make, make my earth shake, didn't make the ground shake beneath my feet, right? But, um, but take it seriously, right? Especially if Dr. Knight is sending you something, right?
Digital Archive. And I have a few other comments, but I want to finish this conversation if anybody else has something else to say about it.
I want, and we're gonna get to Ross's points.
Ah, yes, and Felice, that was the blue, right? The indigo.
Um, there were some others, I can't remember what I put in the email.
Don't try to act like you opened the email, I do that, that's my trick, just go ahead.
It's been a while, but yeah, I think, I know I suggested one with the indigo, another about rice. And then I think, I don't know if I put it in that email, but.
Okay, let me fast forward a little bit, let me see if I can get to. Okay, here's Mayor Teklenburg.
I was just gonna suggest that we don't end up micromanaging Amber on this and can facilitate getting this done in time for our city council meeting. Maybe we vote on the cover photo and then all the rest of the photos. If anybody has an objection to using one of them, let us know and leave it up to Amber to place them throughout the report appropriately. Does that sound reasonable?
They trying to help Amber.
Well, that way, we don't have to, like, micromanage every picture on every page.
Yes, you actually do need their input, but I get it, I do trust, I mean, I would trust Amber too, she's a black woman, she's capable, she's educated, but anyway, the input matters.
I apologize, Mayor, I couldn't hear you very well, it might, I'm not having trouble hearing anyone else.
Yeah, I think it's the mayor's microphone. So what he said, Dr. Knight, is that we would give Amber the autonomy to choose the best picture for the, for the report, rather than micromanaging her, is the word that he used, and making, making it that we have to vote, but we would just make sure that the cover art was something that we all agreed on because I think we all found issue with the art.
Absolutely.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Sorry, if some reason at home.
Okay, alright, alright, alright.
Again, I think the mayor's suggestion is.
Yeah, I know you want to get out of there.
Subcommittee acquired from other agencies that I'm sure were in very strange formats and make it legible. So I really, really want to give a shout out to whomever on the team was able to get that done. But the one thing that I noted with those appendices is they aren't labeled, it's, it's a minor thing, I think it just could be a, a simple.
Okay, so let's get to Ross, let's see if we can get to his comment. I'm trying to fast forward and look, y'all, just trying to look for the lit up, the lit up green box. Wait, here we go, here we go, let me see.
Certainly, we do have some continuity from one commission to the other, so that's something that we will talk about and make sure we. Ross, I think you had your hand up. Go ahead.
Here we go, come on.
Yeah, thank you, Jason, and before I give some comments here, I just want to give a lot of credit and thanks to everybody that was involved in this process, from the chairs to Amber, to everyone else, the subcommittees, et cetera. I'm a big fan of this process, I'm a big fan of this report, I think.
He really trying to set us up, so he trying to set us up to say, hey, I'm about to give you some bullshit, but I'm a big fan of the blacks. I'm a big fan of the blacks, some of my friends are black, that kind of vibe I'm getting.
Like all reports and all, all plans, I think there's some things, you know, you agree, you might agree with and things you might not agree with and everything in between, but it's, it's a plan, it's important to have the complete picture so that everything can be on the table for delivery.
Put yourself on mute, Dudley.
Begin to get to work. I, I want this process to succeed, and so, so my comment that I'm about to make is geared 100% in the interest of this work continuing.
Yeah, I see you care.
And not being derailed. When I went through the report a couple of weeks ago, when we first got it, there were a couple of phrases that stuck out, stood out to me. And I'm not expressing an opinion personally on this.
Yes, you are.
This is a strategic, political.
So let me tell you, let me just, let me just, again, y'all know I get pissed off at, like, really whack leadership. This is what I would have did if I was, if I was Ross. If I was his, if I was his consigliere, right? If I was in his, if I was an advisor to Ross Appel. And I knew what and who Ross tends to support and to lift up, right? We know who we, yeah, I mean, the business interests, the millionaires, the billionaires, all that, right? White folk, the mainstream, whatever, tourist class, the brunch class. I would have said, Ross, if you have these observations, if you have these concerns, or if you've heard this from, from so on and so forth, if you've mentioned this and, and they told you of that language, I would have floated it through another committee, subcommittee chair, or more importantly, I would have floated it through one of my black, one of my black city council people. That, if I, if, if he was even like, a bit, just a little bit savvy, but he's not that. But I'm happy he didn't, because I'm happy to know quite clearly where he stands. He's like, he's saying that this is not of my opinion, I'm just thinking. Well, you could have offered that up during a number of stages as this document was being put together and certain drafts. I mean, this, this had to have come up in casual conversation between you and your peers. You mean to tell me you couldn't have floated some of these concerns? But the fact that you do this on the record, on Zoom, is deliberate. I want y'all to understand that. He knows this is public record now, all the Zoom meetings that have taken place, all of the city council meetings that have taken place virtually and, of course, in person, but this is public record. So this is him trying to do like, you know, remember now, when they take to a mic, they doing a couple of things, they trying to achieve certain things, trying to seem like, hey, I'm not racist, but could you take this language out because the racist people I support don't like this language? Right, and if he was savvy, he would have floated it through one of his black peers, but he not. But I'm glad he didn't, I'm glad he didn't. But this is him going on the record, this is him grandstanding. This is similar to what he did during the, the other meeting that took place, and I'm gonna get to the comments in the section. But, but that's what you're doing.
Type.
Very disrespectful, Tom, yeah.
The word reparations, the word critical race theory, the world, the phrase 1619 project.
The word black.
Okay. I'm concerned that those words could be a problem when this hits the floor of council. And I'm concerned that this could create a very charged, negative process, you know.
So why didn't he tell us what he thinks about those words? Right, because they're not, those words, see, and the thing is that you even, you even accepting this, this, this premise from detractors, right? You even accepting the premise that words like reparations and critical race theory, you accepting that premise to me, to me, and, and trying to, to kind of conceal it in this, this so-called, you know, cautiousness, oh, I'm, I'm, I'm looking out for you guys. Why is, like, you even accepting that premise to me is a problem in this space, at this stage of this document, at this stage of this planning, at this stage of this type of work. To me, this is just like, you're just, you're just trying to pander to your, to your base. There really is no point, because again, this thing been going on for a while, y'all, for a long time. June of 2020 was over a year ago, right? And so this has been going on for a long time, I really think that some of this criticism, some of this critique, some of these questions could have been offered up. And every, and every council person, let me just let you know, every council person had the right, and from what I understood, was encouraged to drop in to our meeting, there were many times where Jason dropped in to History and Culture. And there was a time, I think, that when Mayor Teklenburg dropped in to, to History and Culture. So I'm assuming that that practice was extended to all the other subcommittees. Why didn't you bring that up during the, like, there were so many ways to engage, but again, you're pandering to your base and we know, we see it.
Process on council floor. And I don't want to see that happen, I don't want to see the wonderful work that this group has done.
Compliment sandwich, Joy Brown, yes.
Get derailed because somebody on council says, I can't vote for a document that has critical race theory. I can't vote for a document that has reparations in it.
Come on.
I'm concerned about that, and I would not be doing my job as a commission member on this commission if I didn't express that, that feeling to y'all. And, you know, on some level.
I don't know, Tom.
I personally don't believe those words are necessary for this project. In other words, you know, critical race, uh, critical race theory.
Hey, me, a white man, I don't think that you guys should add that language. I know, I'm sorry, how many PhDs I see in here, at least? Crystal's working on her PhD, Crystal Ross is working on her PhD, Dr. Butler is a PhD, Dr. Knight is a PhD. Those are the ones I know, and Alvin is an engineer. But, but please, continue to explain to us what needs to be included.
Right? What does that mean? It's a very amorphous term. When I hear it, I think of things like zoning and land use and how the origin of zoning is based in explicitly racist intent and, and those structures can't.
Okay, you watched the Now This video, come on.
Very forward to this day. There's no question about that. But that's not what the public hears when they hear that.
Okay, Ally.
And a lot of this is due to.
Ally, again, you're the chair, you're the chair of the, of the, you said the Criminal Justice one, the Criminal Justice Subcommittee? You say he never came to any of your meetings either? I bet.
Misinformation and scare tactics that are promoted by certain voices in our world and in our culture, but it's a reality of our culture and it's a reality of our city and, and.
But that's the thing, this don't have to be voted on by, this ain't gonna be on the November ballot, y'all. This ain't, this ain't on, this, I'm about to spill my matcha all over my keyboard, that'd be a terrible thing. This ain't on the November election. The only people you have to, you have to convince are your literal council, your fellow council people. You got half of them right here, you just don't have Shaheed, you don't have Seekins, you don't have, you know, a couple handful. Ross, if you believe in the document, if you think that those words are not problematic to you personally, if you politically agree with what's in the document, all you have to do is whip up support within council. All you have to do is be allowed, this is what I hate about, like, and I'm not even, I don't think Ross is a well-meaning white guy. I think he's, Ross is pretending to be a well-meaning white guy, right, right now, right? Especially after what he said about activists before, right? And that's so funny because he was diminishing the same seven people, me, Marcus, and I don't even know, probably countless other activists are actually on these subcommittees. But anyway, Ross is acting like a well-meaning white person. When I'm in some of these mixed-race social justice spaces, this is the type of shit that I, this is why I bounced out of them. Like, if it's white-led, you ain't gonna find me there, right? Because there are always these white critical voices who lift up the, who lift up the possibility of, oh, let's take extra caution with, oh, how about we remove this language, this might be incendiary, oh my God, this might get scuttled. It's all, you hear that way louder than you hear the bold vision, the bold action, the bold planning. You always hear this abundance of caution in the term, in, in the form of these, these, like, hey, guys, it's not me, but I was talking to Tom over by the water cooler and Tom said, you know, CRT, that's a note, that's a non-starter. Your job, Ross, is to whip up support. So you go and you champion what you've got, if you've got confidence in the leadership within this screen alone, you go and you champion this document with your chest, Ross, and you tell Waring, you, I'm just saying hypothetically, you tell Waring, you tell Seekins, you tell Shaheed, you tell whomever might be on the fence, you tell them, right? Because we all know, Harry got kicked off, so he salty, I don't even know if he can, can vote on this, if he overaccuse himself or whatever. But, but you tell them, that's your job is to whip up support. If you are giving your full-throated support of this work, don't do this last-minute bullshit argument that ain't even had a, that don't even have a cogent political, like, it ain't even a cogent argument. It's, it's based on rhetoric that you hear on Fox News and Newsmax and shit like that. Like, to me, whip up support. I don't understand how people don't, don't think we know how government works. But you wanted to go on the record because you wanted to pan it to your base and say, hey, guys, I don't like these words either, I brought it up, I brought it up, you saw me, right? You saw me, you saw me at minute, when, one hour and eight minutes, you saw me.
The people that we represent. And I'm just worried that we have some of these terms in here that can be seized upon.
They always want us to sugarcoat everything.
Looking to bring this process down and create a negative situation on council. And the thing is, is like, those words aren't necessary, right? In other words.
How you know? To Joy Brown on Facebook, he's concerned about the misconception, but he's not concerned about clearing up those misconceptions. Yeah, how, how, how come they're exactly that? Your, your critique and your caution is louder than your actual advocacy. And not only should you be whipping up support among your colleagues on city council, you should be whipping up support in your community. How come, I don't, this is what I, this is what blows my mind. How come you're not championing this, like, how come this hasn't been something you've taken to Instagram or Twitter about? You up there retweeting the fucking police every fucking five minutes? But how many times have you actually retweeted or shared any information about the, comparatively, about, about what the kind of work going on with this commission? Like, how come you haven't used your voice to help legitimize the work being done in this commission? It's already been politicized by people like Harry Griffin, right? So how come you're not out there being louder about this in the public, if you really believe in it? But don't tell a bunch of black people with degrees and lived experience, don't tell a bunch of black people what's necessary and what's not. Get out of here, that language impacts our daily lives.
You could say critical race theory, but what we're really talking about is specifics, right?
Look at Kim Butler's face, y'all. Look at Dr. Butler's face.
With the way it was structured and the intent, and there's a long line of other issues. So I guess what I'm just saying is, is I'm concerned, I feel compelled to express that concern. My concerns might be 100% wrong. And if I'm wrong, I want, I want to be wrong. I, I, I hope that this document, as it stands right now.
Wish granted, wish granted. Instant gratification, you're wrong.
And it might, and I, and I don't know.
I wish and hope.
I'm concerned based upon my gut feeling that that may not be the case, and I would hate to see this process.
I bet your gut feeling got a name and a dollar sign attached to it.
You know, all the great stuff that's in this report be ignored and those buzzwords be seized upon by people that want to take this thing.
You know what, I'm gonna need more, like, these dudes are really good at, like, taking advantage of, like, zoning laws and promoting projects that they'll later benefit from in the end, you know, later on down the street, like, they're really good at setting up legislation that they'll benefit from once they leave office, right? They're really good at doing that. I really wish they'd be better at selling things that they actually care about, or selling things that they actually are fans about. And like, I really wish they would do better, like, you're a horrible, if you are selling this to your constituency right now, Ross, you're doing a horrible job. I don't, I don't want that, sir, I don't want what you're selling, because that, you, you just lost, like, they're just horrible, horrible salespeople. I mean, this is just, and this is the thing about a Ross or anyone else who might be on the fence, and I don't know, I can't, I don't know if there have been any other types of, like, comments from anyone else, but let me see how I can say this, let me see how I can say this. I don't know how other council people feel about this, but I feel like the savvy ones would have used this as a moment, used this as a moment to get really behind something and show and prove Sacran's doing that. Sacran's making sure that he's, Carol Jackson, to a degree, is doing that. He, they recognize this moment in history, and they, they said, you know what? We're gonna say, we're gonna stand right behind it. We're gonna support it. We're gonna show up. We're gonna be present. We're gonna pop in. We're gonna check in. We're gonna rewrite. We're gonna call people. That's what that, that's what that's what Jason's doing. Jason said, I know what this moment is. Whether or not, what his motives, I will never know his personal motives. I know how he's showing up in this space and why he could do more and could do better. Again, he's taking it seriously and he's not being hypercritical. Right?
Down. And I'm very, I'm very sensitive.
Right, Jessica.
Councilman Gregory said, I I don't, I, this is purely strategic in nature. This is not about whitewashing or watering.
Yes, it is.
We can have all of what we all mean.
Look at Darren.
Firmly.
Look at Darren at the bottom.
Conceded into this document without having those words there to be seized on by others. So, um, I just felt like I had to get off that off my chest. Again, I want this process to succeed. I'm a big proponent of this effort. I will talk to people till the day I die about how zoning is a racist institution.
You'll talk about it.
African Americans were locked out of.
Are locked out of.
Opportunities and wealth creating.
Dude, y'all doing it now.
Not, you know, in the 1700s or in the 1800s, but in the 1940s, 50s and 60s.
It up until the 1990s, the little slave shacks that sit on McLeod plantations were still being rented out to poor black people. Up into the 1990s, if you go to the McLeod plantation, the only plantation I go to, right? That centers the black experience. If you go to the McLeod plantation, you'll see these small shacks, right? No electricity, no modern, no modernization. Those shacks, those single room shacks with no, no plumbing, were rented out to black people in Charleston up into the 1990s. Don't lecture us on housing and redlining and racial covenants. This is not the time for that. So you watch the PBS special. Good for you. This is not the time to lecture these people who study and do this for a living. Like, he took up a lot of time just to say nothing. You could, that could have been an email.
And and that is a, you know, I'm with you on that 100% of the way. So I'm I'm blabbering now, but I felt like I had to get that off my chest. I don't know what we should do or say about it, maybe not do anything about it, but I've I've said my piece. And again, appreciate everybody's work on this process and um.
Shout out Darren. Darren got a T-shirt that says, Black Women Matter. Ooh, I'm gonna cop that. Um, and um, on um, on Facebook, shout out, hey, hey, friend, hey, Audrey. Audrey Lee, you said Darren is doing the church rock. And Raisin on you co-sign. Yup. And then, um, Allie, you said racist people that are going to be against uh, against this report will be against it regardless, whether or not those terms are included. Thank you, Allie. Thank you. Whether or not it includes the critical race theory reparations or whatnot. Exactly. And you don't have to, you don't have to sell this to the general public, not, not, well, you do, you do, like championing on your, you know, on your pages and whatnot. And whenever you get a time to show your enthusiasm, right? But you honestly just have to convince your peers. That's who's gonna vote on the recommendations, right? So why, why try to appease detractors that you're know, that they'll be there? They didn't even like, they didn't even like the fact that this thing was already formed. Like, the way the Overton Report and Harry Griffin vilified the creation of this very commission. So it it doesn't, it doesn't even matter. You can't, you can't build, you can't craft legislation, you can't advocate for your community from a fear, from a standpoint of fear. Especially you can't kowtow and capitulate to white races. Why would you care about what a racist thinks? Why would you, and 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 Ross, if you can crack a book, you'll understand critical race theory is not what the, not the boogeyman that has, it has been turned into. So if you even know that intellectually, regardless of public sentiment, regardless of its demonization, right? And its bastardization, regardless of that national bullshit that you see on Newsmax and OAN and whatever the channel is, you know, as an intellectual, you should know intellectually, Ross, that that's not, that's a bogus argument. So why even entertain it? Why waste our our time?
Hope this process succeeds and I look forward to taking up some of this important work in committee and and making things.
Could have been an email. Could have been an email.
Thanks, Ross. Yes, go ahead.
Yeah. So I would say, Ross, I thank you so much for talking up because I'm sure that we're gonna hear that a lot.
Look at Darren, look at Darren is.
When we joined this commission, it was to trailblaze. And when we start to eliminate some of the words that are actually factual, like critical race theory, we are indeed whitewashing.
Come on.
And so this is a document that's not centered in the white experience and it will make you feel uncomfortable. But it's in that uncomfortableness that I hope that we can move forward. And when we talk about housing issues for people of color, it did not stop in 1960. It is going on in 2021. And so it's something that we finally have to recognize here in Charleston, that this is not a pleasurable number one location for all people that are here. And so how do we not um, put that in this document? Because we want to compromise or make racists feel comfortable.
Come on.
Just like the government says, we do not negotiate with terrorists, we should not negotiate with races. If we are truly looking to move our society, our community past where it has been.
Look at Alvin.
I think Kim stated it beautifully. Thank you, Kim. And thank you also, Ross, for for raising that point. Because that is something that we do have to remember and keep at the forefront. And like Kim said, we have to look at this opportunity.
Crystal's trying to play nice.
Learning experience for some because, you know, yeah, these words may seem harsh and hard. But at the same time, it's real and it's been harsh and hard for a lot of us for a long time. So we have to, if if the city of Charleston.
Come on.
Is serious about work around equity, inclusion and racial, racial conciliation. Them voting these recommendations down would be a slap in the face, not only to the, to citizens who live here. And I pray that anyone who does vote it down does not plan on running again for office.
Woo, talk about gauntlet. Exactly. And and let me just say that, let me give Crystal some more credit. On top of being brilliant, on top of just working her butt off, she has a partner, a spouse that uh, is that, that, you know, is is um, a union member at the ILA. Crystal is is just, she was the first one to bring up on the, some of the initial meetings that were held on Zoom. And she questioned, is this fun, is this commission going to be funded? Because you'll show us how serious you are about these recommendation, about this work, if this commission is funded. And, you know, she got a couple of humina, 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 I don't know, da, 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 oh, we can get some sponsors. Which I don't even know what happened with that. Did anyone court Google? Did anyone court Boeing? Did anyone court uh, BMW? Did anyone court Volvo? Did anyone court any of these big national, did anyone um, court, court uh, the country, the city of Doha? Like, did anyone actually try to get some, some Skrilla for this commission? Did anyone try to get some fucking money for this commission? And that's the still a question I still have. I don't know how seriously they went out to even try to find the funds. The city didn't even appropriate no funds. I expected the city to be shiftless and shiftless and penny pinching and not give no money, right? They outsourced everything, even even some monuments that, you know, you have to, I learned through this process, you essentially have to raise the money yourself to get monuments erected. That's what the daughters of Confederacy been doing, right? They raised the money, they created these clubs and they erected these racist monuments. Well, essentially, that practice is still going on. There's a statue that's gonna be dedicated to E.E. Just, you know, a son of Maryville. Well, his, his, his fraternity is is raising the money for that. And what did the city do? They wanted to swoop in and put their name on the plaque, ask them, hey, can we be a part of the process? So so my point is that they out, they outsource, when it comes to recognizing black history, black achievements from Charleston, they always outsource that stuff. They never give any money. But I expected them to put their money where their mouth is. I don't know why. When they didn't, I'm like, you know what, Smigga, why you surprised? And then, when I heard certain council people saying, well, we'll court sponsors, what happened to that? Because it still ain't funded. It still ain't funded. And I also in our, in our subcommittee, I lifted up to, hey, we need to create a series. See, this is the thing, when the 1619 project came out, it wasn't, it was, it was big fanfare, of course, it's New York Times, it's a whole different animal, right? But what you saw from it is what you could copy and paste. You saw panel discussions, you saw podcasts, a limited podcast series, right? Well, what, four or five episodes? There were the huge panel discussions that went live virtually and in person, right? And you had all these scholars and the contributors come and talk about what they did. That's what I suggested for our history and culture, said, we need to create, um, we need to create companion um, uh, programming that would help contextualize how we arrived at this decision making, how we made these decisions and why, and invite the voices that we want to lift up, invite some of these walking archives, invite some of these grannies, the people like my daddy, who have all this, this memory, this historical memory that will be lost when they die. Because there is no real city held archive outside the Avery. There really isn't that hub here, right? And and so this is the thing that you want to, and you can't do that, y'all, without money. You can't create those programs without money. You can't book the Gill Yard without money and resources. You can't invite scholars from other, from other areas to help, help us have this conversation without money. And I'm sorry, I just went on a little tirade, but without money, it don't mean nothing. Shout out to Crystal for making that known from gate. And I'm glad that she also threw down a gauntlet in terms of, hey, this is gonna have political consequences for y'all. If you want to vote against the the best interest of black and brown people in Charleston, there will be consequences. It's important for people to say that. And I don't care how anyone took that. Yes, it was a threat. Yes, it was a threat. She had time today. Yes, she did, Nicole. Or that day.
Thank you, Chris. I know there's several hands up. Alvin, you had your hand up?
Got you, AJ.
Yeah, I did.
Oral history, Sean.
There's really nothing that I can say that 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 Kim and Crystal didn't.
Shout out, Alvin.
Beautifully there. Um, I'm just one of those people that like to know who's with me and who's against me at the end of the day. We put forth a whole lot of effort, time and energy.
A lot, y'all.
A lot of us up, like, really approached this, not necessarily knowing whether this was even going to happen, to be quite honest with you.
Yep.
And for Ross, we appreciate your comment, but for you to come and make those comments now.
See?
You know, it kind of sort of made me take a couple of steps back, to be quite honest. I get it. It's.
I'm out of focus.
Strategic in nature, but at the end of the day, we gotta press forward. We gotta press forward. So.
And I said that, right? I know I'm out of focus. I'm, I'm, right? But I said that, I said, like, you saying this now, we already a year past, I'm trying to get focused. We already a year into this and now you want to levy these concerns and criticisms. It's just really shitty timing.
Reparations is reparations. We have to repair what the past has caused in the current day. Everything that you described was critical race theory at the end of the day, right? You, you defined it. You, what, everything you said is, that is critical race theory.
Come on.
So, I mean, we can't be afraid of words.
Somebody, shout out to y'all who said that.
And we gotta take a head on.
Who was that? Tom Bean?
Yeah, we gotta take.
Why are white people so afraid of words? I think you said that earlier.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Alvin.
John, and then Carol, and then Darren.
This camera get on my nerves.
John, Carol, Darren, in that order.
Yeah, and again, to everyone's point already, beautifully said. Councilman Appel, I do appreciate you kind of bringing it forward in the conversation so that we can go ahead and and kind of have some of this set on the record so that everybody can know where we stand.
Where we stand.
If it were a matter of pure semantics, then yes, I I can see where we can make a change to some things to make it maybe, you know, more direct to what we were trying to implement or trying to say. But there was intentionality in the word choice.
Come on.
And that intentionality has to stay put in order for the integrity of this document to stand on its own feet. With that in mind, I want to make sure that we're aware of that because this document as it is already has a great deal of consideration to broad appeal already.
Exactly. It's already.
And any, any more kind of bending.
Massaging.
Is gonna feel very disingenuous to the work that we're trying to do.
What Captain Glitter said.
So that's, I I want to.
Oh, Captain Glitter said it.
Again, I feel very much like you're doing more of like a devil's advocate.
Sorry, Captain Glitter, you said it.
And it would be, it would be one thing if we were looking for unanimous vote. But I don't think that that's necessarily something that's number one for us. It'd be great to have. But to to the point, I don't remember exactly who made it, but, oh, Alvin made it, as a matter of fact. It's good to know sometimes what a vote shows. So I'm not afraid of roll call votes for things like this. And there's, there's great power in standing strong behind the votes that you make. So, um, yeah. I just wanted to make that point.
Put your, put your name on it.
Intentionality behind these words were very direct and I'm glad that they're there.
Carol, and then Darren.
Thanks. Um, I I'm, I totally agree and am soaking into the responses that you all have given to Ross.
Oh, boy.
I guess what I'm, what I'm most concerned about is the, the way that this report is gonna be put into the council's hands. I I think that at that point in time, unless they've been on this commission and participated in 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 some of the subcommittee work, or at least observing the subcommittees, that a lot of our colleagues who have not been party to that.
That's your job, though.
In-depth understanding or appreciation.
Y'all's job is to whip that up.
Reading it for the first time and and realistic.
So this is, this is when you, you, you schedule a little work and lunch with your, with your, with your colleague or something. This is when you, you go over to their house on a, on a, on a Thursday evening, on, on the, on the porch. And you know what I mean? Y'all have refreshing drinks and shit and you talk and you, and you make the appeal. You know the broad strokes. This is when you go into Amber's office, say, Amber, give me a five minute pitch for this so I can tell people and get people excited about this, this thing. Then, and and like with COVID response, like with the statewide and, and city and, and county government COVID response, you don't even know about, you don't know about what's available. You don't know about links to certain resources. They don't, they don't do a good job. They don't do a good job marketing, even things that are not completed, but marketing their, their attempts to get things right. They they fumble. This is what's so wild. You're so quick to go at an activist on a Zoom because you guys Twitter fingers or you got some kind of Zoom, some kind of Zoom energy. I don't know what the equivalent of of Twitter fingers is on Zoom when you feel real, you're feeling real froggy behind a virtual screen. But you'll take time and energy to 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 impugn the integrity of the activists that are actually shaping, shaping local attitudes towards some of these things, when you could have been championing all of this work that's been going on for over a year. That's what you could have been doing. How hard is it for you to go into Amber's office and say, hey, Amber, can we schedule some time within the next two to three weeks? We could talk about your work, what you went in there, what you think is important? Then why, why can't you do that? And then moreover, why didn't the city, why didn't the city reach out to the C V B? Because they like to act like they down with black causes now because the museum is about to open up, right? Why didn't you go down to the C V B and ask them for input on how to implement some sort of PR strategy, a, a small localized PR strategy about the work that's being done? Right? Well, why didn't you do that? You're gonna, you're gonna be telling us how you, how y'all all fixed Tony Field. You're gonna be telling us, you know, how y'all all worked so hard to get the museum open. Why can't you tell us how, how, how meaningful this document will be or how meaningful this work or how multicultural this work has looked? The leadership on this work is multicultural and very multifaceted. And a lot of people gave a lot of their time and energy, right? Like, why didn't you market that already? Go in her office, go in Amber's office, reach out to John, who no longer works there, but reach out to John. Have a little lunch with him. Reach out to some of these subcommittee, these subcommittee chairs. Bend their ear. Like, y'all, y'all, all this what aboutism and what if we don't and how if it gets in their hands? That was y'all's job, was to whip up support. But y'all were more preoccupied with getting your name on the list of saying, yeah, I supported it. Yeah, I supported it. You cared about your name being listed as one of the, the council people that that were there, but your job is to champion this. I don't, I don't get that. I don't, I just don't, I don't understand that.
Actually, a lot of us don't, you know, really soak into everything that we're handed in our council packets to read. I would think that this would be, you know, a priority, but we, we don't know. And what I'm concerned about is that we're gonna be asked to accept a report that we haven't really had the opportunity to understand in the way that it will be.
Now you know how voters felt when y'all rushed that, rushed that First Amendment ordinance after nine days, nine days after you first did the first round of of amendments or whatever, right? And then you not make it, then you not, not open it to public comment. Now you know how we feel. You didn't have enough time? You didn't have enough time to go over it?
Evaluated and dealt with by the staff and the, and the council standing committees where people really do, I think, take responsibility for being an active participant.
I see you, AJ.
And a member of their own standing committees. So I.
Dee, your comment over here on Twitch. Dee, you say whiteness loves to express victimization. We didn't have time. Slow down, right? Slow down. Wait, justice? Wait a minute, let's talk about, what does that mean? So if you get justice, does that mean I get less justice? Like, that's all she's doing, right? Come on. Dee, you sound apoplectic.
I I really agree that, you know, having a vote will tell the tale. But I, I'm, I'm a little worried that whatever the council is asked to do, I thought we were gonna receive. whatever the council is asked to do, I thought we were going to receive.
I'm telling you, if we want anything, then I'm gonna transition out because I know it's nine o'clock. I know some people got to bounce and all that. I'm gonna transition out because I, we got to, we got the, I'm glad we got the response to Ross and real, like that real-time response that occurred. Shout out Dr. Kimberly Butler Willis. Shout out John Mitchell. Shout out Alvin Johnston. Johnston, excuse me. Shout out Crystal Rouse for just speaking up on that. We don't really hear, need to hear any more cautious white, you know, hand wringing, right? That, you don't really need that. That, so again, I wanted to show you, like, I wanted to compare this. Now, this is something that I, I read this years ago, and I just kept going back to this. Not this. I kept going back to this article from the, from Color Lines, another website y'all should routinely support and, and read from. You're going to get a different perspective on news and things like this. So this is Color Lines. This is back from 2018, August of 2018. And this is, I was trying to research, like, other cities, like, okay, after racial unrest, after rebellion, after, after folks have taken to the streets to say, hey, stop killing us, right? Right? Um, I'm gonna get y'all, I'm gonna get y'all on Facebook. After that, what do other cities do? So you look at the cities where the more high-profile extrajudicial killings of black people happen, and there's no, there's one city that stuck out for me, Baltimore, of course, following Freddie Gray. All right, so Baltimore funding model challenges nonprofit industrial complex practices. I'm, I'm gonna enhance this a little bit more so we can read this together. Right? So with the Freddie Gray uprising as a catalyst, remember the beginning of the document, the beginning of the PDF, right? Beginning of the, 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 um, the opening, um, the opening, what do you call it? Not the summary. Dee, not the intro. Right, the commission overview, right? On June 9th, 2020, Mayor Teklenburg and City Council voted to create special commission, right? And that June 9th is important because the uprising took place at the end of May, right? Remember that, right? Remember that. So that's why, that's when this was formed. So following Freddie Gray, the Freddie Gray uprising that took place in Baltimore, using, as, using that as a catalyst, Baltimore residents voted the $12 million Children and Youth Fund, voted in a $12 million fund. This is the city of Baltimore actually allocating resources to respond to what we just saw. So this is a response from Baltimore in 2018. Why couldn't we have responded like this, right? Not, not, of, of course, we are very politically different. We are not majority black anymore. I get it. I get it. I get it. I get it. Okay, here's how a local activist in the majority black city ensured that young people, young, excuse, young, comma, people of color-led, comma, grassroots groups had a seat at the table. So when that 12, when that $12 million had to be divvied up, right? So let's just read a little bit of this, right? Three years after the police killing of Freddie Gray triggered an uprising in Baltimore, little has changed for black residents who make up 63% of its population. Attempts to prosecute Gray's killers famously failed. 2017 consent decree, which the Baltimore Police Department entered into after the United States Department of Justice found a pattern of civil rights violations against blacks is installed, is stalled, right? This year, revelations about the corruption and violence of Baltimore Police Department's Gun Trace Task Force underscore more of the same. Things didn't change after that initially, right? There is, however, the potential for change in the form of the Baltimore Children and Youth Fund, the B C Y F, right? More than two decades in the making, the new $12 million fund. So they knew this money was coming, right? But this is how you use the moment, the political moment, to steer those resources in the right direction, right? And not, not just have all this big nonprofit industrial complex, not have the Ben Navarro-led, dark money-led groups at the table ready to cannibalize, or not cannibalize, but ready to, to take and co-op, or just take the money. You'll, you actually create a space for, let me see if I can blow it a little bit more. For, for, for the grassroots groups on, on the ground, okay? All right, let me close this out, okay? There's however potential for change in the form of Baltimore Children and Youth Fund, all right? More than two decades in the making, the new $12 million fund provides local youth-focused groups with grants ranging from $500 to $500,000. B C Y F is funded annually by 3% of the city's property tax. What would it look like if this city taxed these developers from, from Doha? These developers from the, from Saudi Arabia, these developers from Georgia, from Boston? What would it look like if we just did it? And shout out to Angela Mack from the Gibbs, who was, who was the vice chair on history and cultural commission. She lifted that up several times. That, that white woman was speaking facts several times when she said, why don't we tax developers? Why don't we, if the city don't want to pay for shit, tax these people coming in here, building up all these behemoths who turn around and just sell it off for a profit a couple of years later? Why don't we do that? If you don't want to pay for it, why don't you actually steer some of that money here? And y'all know the answer to that, right? Right? So, so anyway, so just breaking down this situation, funded by 3% of the city's property taxes, right? What's innovative is how the, its principles structured it to ensure that small black grassroots groups that usually go unfunded, right, have a seat at the table, right? So that's that. Let me get over here and see these, these comments. Let me see these comments real quick. Let me see what anybody said there. Yep, let me see. You been screaming that too, AJ, right? Right? I'm not, I'm not, we not bugging. The money's here, y'all. There's no scarcity. That's the, that's the, that's the thing they won't tell you. There is no scarcity. There's no scarcity. The money is here. The money is hella here. We, we done seen the Ben Navarro news. Didn't Ben Navarro just buy up a big old hotel downtown? Didn't Ben, Ben Navarro, billionaire Ben Navarro, who's trying to, trying to take over your public schools with his dark money? Didn't he just buy up the Charleston place? The money's here. The money's here. Now let me flip over to this. This is an old interview from Real News. Remember, we, 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 we look at Real News like this is another news outlet, Real News. You can find them on YouTube. You can download their podcast. So this is, this is more, this is one of the activists at the time, this is Adam Jackson from this group. Well, from Leaders of a Beautiful Struggle. I don't know if he's still with Leaders from a Beautiful Struggle right now. But this is during the time that this move was being made, and he's one of the leading voices to help craft this move. So let's listen to a little bit about this, about it from him.
Welcome to the Real News Network. I'm Lisa Snowden-McRae, editor in chief of The Baltimore Beat, an independent weekly newspaper in Baltimore City. At a time when some Maryland leaders, notably Governor Larry Hogan, are looking to crack down on crime, others are taking the longer view, pushing the idea that the way to stop crime is by focusing on and nurturing the city's youngest residents. The Baltimore City Council recently approved a $12 million youth fund aimed at making sure that smaller groups dedicated to working with kids in the city get the money they need to do their jobs.
We're the only third or fourth city that have targeted funding for our youth. It was meant to get to grassroots organizations that's out doing the real community work. It's not going to exclude anyone who was a 501(c)(3), but everybody is welcome to apply to get this funding as long as they're looking to take after our kids.
Adam Jackson, CEO of the Grassroots Think Tank, Leaders of a Beautiful Struggle, co-chaired a 34-member task force aimed at laying the groundwork for the fund. He's here to talk a little bit more about it. Thanks for being here, Adam.
Thank you for having me.
Okay, so we know now that it's been approved. Tell me a little bit, actually, backing up how you guys got involved with this.
So the beginning of this previous, oh, this year, in 2017, after the referendum was voted for in the November election. So there were a bunch of meetings convened by different people around the youth fund. And so essentially what was happening is that there were a bunch of white corporate nonprofits moving in, trying to make themselves the center of the resources, the center of gravity for the fund. And so a lot of our advocacy in general around Baltimore has been criticized as a nonprofit sector in terms of who gets resources and who doesn't. And traditionally, how they suck up a lot of the air when we're talking about getting resources from not just the government, but philanthropy. And so part of our intervention in the process was to figure out how to make sure that that money went to smaller, particularly black-led organizations and groups in Baltimore, to make sure that we finance the institutions in our community that are working on behalf of our people.
And was that something?
So there you go, right? And I know you're saying, well, Mika, what does that do? My point is that if you have, if you have people like an AJ, right? AJ has a consultant and LLC, right? All right, not a 501(c)(3), which I think is actually an important distinction to make. Now, I had never talked to AJ about how he should, 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 should or could or did or why he did incorporate. I'm talking about you, AJ, like you not potentially listening, but you, like, I never had a conversation with AJ. But, but being someone who's been in this town long enough to understand, you know, huh. I, I've been around so much. I've had so many cups of coffee with white people, well-meaning white people who work in a nonprofit industrial complex. And it's like, oh, you need to get a 501(c)(3). Mika, you need a 501(c)(3). You know you need to get a 501(c)(3). If you really want to raise money, you gotta get a 501(c)(3). And I resisted that. Not to say that I won't later, but I resisted that because like, I felt like that would be me being, becoming part of the problem. Again, I don't know if AJ, if you wrestle with that. Also, too, this work, I needed to make this work, work sustainable, right? So just like you saw Leaders of a Beautiful Struggle, that's a think tank, right? You have to, you have to create something to where you can, we, we, there are so many voices. My point, I said all that to say, there are so many voices out here, right, that look all kinds of ways. And there are so many thoughtful voices who have already studied these issues, and they might not be a 501(c)(3), right? They might be an LLC shit. They might not be anything. They might have a fiscal sponsor. And it's important to honor those voices and not just, you know, because we understand that, you know, traditional philanthropy was created in a way, right? There was no philanthropy at the onset, at the outset, at the, at the beginning of the civil rights struggle. You didn't have all these nonprofits and whatnot. You started seeing that toward the middle and tail end, so much so that even Ella Baker, Ella Baker had commented on like, I'm getting a lot of attention from the foundation complex, as she called it, right? Because these things were put in place to neutralize movements, right? Nonprofits is a way for the government to surveil certain work, the way the game is rigged. And if you were a part of my giving project when I was with the, with the Cypress Fund, I did a whole, I did a whole curriculum on Jim Crow philanthropy, on, on, you know, philanthrocapitalism, hello, Ben Navarro, right? I did a whole thing on that, right? So, so this is steeped in, in, in white supremacist practices and all that other stuff, right? It, it's very, the very reason why some of these nonprofits were created was to surveil these, these communities. And Ben Navarro, what he's doing because, because of his interests, his business interests, he's actually creating products that enter into our school system that just essentially just track his future customers from very young ages until when they mature, right? Creating, just creating a whole bank, has a whole bank of customers, potential customers that he's grooming, right? And so, so that's why you need to be very, you need to be very, you know, that's why when everyone says, well, oh, this nonprofit does this and this. You gotta really look at the work they do, and you gotta look at what kind of harm they may be out here perpetuating. And, and, and the, the solution to some of these problems are not just nonprofit work. We've got to stop doing that. Like, the work of the granny that takes in six kids after school until their mama get off work. Well, that woman is doing, doing quality community work. She's doing community outreach, right? Or that, or that guy, that church, that guy that has access to the church van that makes sure he picks up them kids off that, at their dirt road and take them to a school, a better school, maybe at a district, but takes them to a better, take them to their school because they don't have a bus. You know, that's, that's quality community work. And I think what the work in Baltimore shows us is that not just nonprofits will have a seat at the table, but you can actually honor the voice of the activists. Here in Charleston, you know that sentiment is not here. It's not largely held. So we have to start, and this is not to demonize anyone who works for nonprofit, works for Try It and works for whatever, right? But we have to start being very, very clear about the harm done by the, 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 you know, by philanthropy, by traditional white philanthropy, Jim Crow philanthropy. We got to be really, really careful of that and honor the work being done by folks who are not 501(c)(3)'s. There's no reason why an AJ and his peers can't be called on to help write policy prescriptions for the city. There's no reason why, because he's not a 501(c)(3), right? And he shouldn't have to always, I don't know, you should, you should, you should be able to honor certain voices that come to the table. I think that's important. Yeah, and they took a ton of, let me see what I'm saying. And they took advantage of a ton of grants, too. Okay, Jessica Baltimore is your, okay, okay. I got you. That's your area. Okay, I want to, um, let me see. I wanted to go back out here. Let me see if there was something else I wanted to play from that. I don't think, oh, I wanted to kind of pivot to, to other work. I think what I'm trying to say, I want to land this plane a little bit before I hop off. I want, what I'm trying to say, too, about the commission and its work. You knew, you kind of knew from, from, from the start, from the word go, how seriously some of the, the white and, and black council people took this work by their approach. You kind of got it. And like to Alvin's point, we kind of want to know who stands, who stands with us and who doesn't, right? We want to know that. Their approach, though, and so, so what, for the next time, for the next go-round, when there's a, when there's a, the next racial something, right? That occurs here in Charleston, because it will happen again, the work should look something different. I wanted to play a little bit from the artist, artistry and advocacy event that we held when I worked for Policy Link for well over a year to craft the Water Album curriculum. The core, the core, I guess you would say, inspiration or the framework was established by Benny Starr's Award Album. But, but what I was charged with, and not no, really no, but what I was charged with was designing, I designed the slides, yes, but I also created. I also, you know, come up with the content that's in, so everything in here is, is I put it here. I didn't take the pictures, of course. Some pictures I took, some pictures I didn't take, but I didn't take the pictures. Oh, I took this picture. I took that picture. But there, you know, I took certain images from Award Album, from the performance and all of that. I'm bringing this up. Wow, Mika, why are you bringing this up? Are you trying to flex on your own work again? No, I'm trying to show you that when you're, when you're being, when an activist is being engaged, and I think I put the quote, I put the quote over here. I didn't do that. Let me just exit. I think I put the quote over here. You know, I came, they came into, they came to me, even though Benny was the, the person, the artist they had the relationship with, he introduced me to them as well. I'm like, hey, I want to kind of create this with Mika. And I pulled this quote from, from Cherie Renee Thomas. This was included in Octavia's Brood, you know, the activist and the artist seem at first to have been engaged in markedly different work, yet they embrace a shared dream for the future. Why is that important to this conversation? It's important, the activist voice is important, and art is another way to get some of this message out, right? That's why you heard the principal subcommittee chairs be so vocal about the images that were being used, right? It's very important because art is going to be kind of like the thing, the kind of like the grease and the spokes to help advance whatever is in that dense 100-plus-page document. The artistry helps. But let me go to the actual video from the event, and I, I want you to hear in the beginning. Now, this is a, this is a think tank. This is something that stands on its own, but I want you to hear like the thoughtfulness and the, the thoughtfulness that went into, hey, we want to engage these voices to help us craft policy. Because in, in essence, what Policy Link does, they engage artists to help them create policy around climate change and around other issues. But like climate change specifically and access to water. So I just wanted to play a little bit at the beginning.
So, welcome, everyone. My name is Axel Santana. I'm an associate at Policy Link, currently residing on Muakma Oloani tribal land. And before we get started, I just want to encourage you to educate yourselves about the indigenous lands you reside on and encourage you to donate your money, your time.
Hey, Julie.
Any resources you might have to supporting indigenous-led organizations and amplifying the voices of indigenous people leading grassroots change movements in your area and beyond. And so amplifying black indigenous people of color and frontline voices is what we aim to do as part of our work as the Water and Climate Resilience Caucus. We are a network of over 100 organizations across the country seeking to advance water equity through advocacy, communication and solidarity acts. The caucus is co-chaired by Policy Link ourselves and the Gulf Coast Center on Law and Policy.
I just want to say that, like, Policy Link, and I don't think I'm telling too much inside, inside business. Policy Link didn't just say, hey, Mika, Benny, Benny floated your name. Can you, can you be down? Policy Link, we had extensive meetings. We've had so many meetings. We had so many things where we went back and forth, but chief among that, they came with that money. And I'm not talking about anything crazy. I'm just saying, hey, we're going to actually pay you what your money is worth. And, I mean, excuse me, pay you, pay you, Mika, what your work is worth. And I, that to me, from gate, that paperwork being signed before I even touched anything was important to me. Was important to me. And you can hear the thoughtfulness. Now, again, this is a think tank, but the voices they employ, right? The voices that they enlisted, rather, was important, and the, and the lens through which they created the work was important, right? I'm going to encourage y'all to, I know, Audrey, you said drop the links. I'll drop the links. But you can, you can listen to each podcast episode. The first one is real Charleston-specific. The subsequent ones and the ones that I'll, I'll continue to build out are very, you'll get that, you'll get a, you'll get a coast-to-coast view. You'll get people from New Orleans. You'll get people from California. You're going to get people from all corners, talk about what they do in Detroit. You'll get that broader perspective of the work behind. You'll get that broader perspective of the work behind water advocacy, what that looks like. And I just thought, this is a, this is how you champion, this is how you, you lift up this, hey, this issue is important to me, let's throw our resources and enlist some of the, the most powerful voices, let's enlist those voices to help promote this cause. And that's something that we're just not seeing that, we're not seeing that from our elected officials, right? And like, and one thing that I, I talked about here, and I'mma, I'mma say this and I'mma dip, cause this is where I drop the mic a lot, right? I'mma, I'mma put this in present mode. This is my favorite bell hook quote, I know I done talked about this a lot, I know I say this often too, so if you see, if you heard me say this, you know, just, you know, take a drink if you heard me say this, uh, you know, once too many times. It says, uh, white supremacy, this is from bell hooks, y'all, from Real to Real, Race Class and Sex at the Movies, I, I highly suggest you read that book. White supremacy creates a situation where white people worship at the throne of black mediocrity. And that means it will always seek to nurture that which is half-formed in the black expressive culture over that which is demonstrative, excuse me, excuse me, over that which demonstrates some quality of vision and illumination, excuse me, uh, over which, um, over, excuse me, over that which does demonstrate some quality of vision and illumination. And Mika, why is that important when you're talking about, you know, this really ultra-black led, um, you know, commission? Well, it's important because what you'll see lifted up by the city, the voices you'll hear lifted up by the city are, are usually those who are, are, are less talented, who are, who I would call mediocre, right? And so there's this class of black mediocrity that, that's ultimate goal and vision is to really just corral the blacks within their sphere of influence. The man don't like when I start talking. So there's a certain class of like black mediocre, the, the ones that keep calling, the ones they just keep calling, y'all know, y'all know a couple of them names, they keep, they keep calling the same ones. Uh, same ones over and over again, and usually are a man, never really a woman that gets called over and over again, even though Chris Kaelin is a whole HBCU beauty queen, a whole dancer, a whole top rated radio DJ. For some reason, you don't call on Chris Kaelin the way you call on some of these mediocre men. Anyway, just saying, just saying. She just, I just helped her negotiate her contract with Comedy Central. She did the voiceover work for that Stephen Colbert, Colbert produced show. I mean, I just, I mean, I, I seen it, I seen it on the backend and the frontend, the girl is legit. I just helped her with them financials. Girl is legit. Anyway, you'll see in Charleston, especially around work that's designed to bring about racial conciliation and justice and all the other buzzwords that they, they really are not connected to, but you'll see them lift up black voices that are more, are more so accommodation, this accommodationist voices. And, and usually those accommodationist Negroes, what they like to do is corral the blacks in their, within their sphere of influence and deliver them to the white dominant culture. And then so they could say, hey, well, we consulted this group, or we looked, we talked to this person, and they'll get quick yeses and whatnot, right? And so you'll see that around the discussion of this work, a lot of mediocre black voices, shit, a lot of conservative black voices that don't have a cogent political point of view, you'll see those voices also emerge as well. So just be cognizant of that, be, be mindful of that, um, be, you know, listen to what people are saying, don't just say, oh, it's a black face and they don't challenge it. And I know white folks, you know, tread, tread carefully, but my point is that y'all, y'all know this though, y'all have a, it's not hard to discern sometimes when you just got somebody fugazi that's just there to just be representation. And so you need thoughtful, brash, bold, um, you know, voices that have vision, you need that. And a lot of the work that's been, uh, attempted by this commission, a lot of that work requires bold leadership. It requires champions who are not afraid to speak out about, you know, and advocate for and lift up this, this effort. Um, this is a lot of work. And shoot, and I'm talking about how much work I expended, how much energy I expended, but the, 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 the subcommittee chairs did a lot of work. They had a lot more meetings. So for every one meeting I had, I think Felice had these two or three more. Not only that, corralling us all, coordinating schedules, chasing me down for minutes because I would get my minutes in mad late. You know, there's a lot of work being led by each, um, subcommittee chair and vice chair. Um, and so you need people to honor that work, to justify that work by being, by being loud champions of that work. And so you, you should want to, if you're white, you should want to listen for really strong voices around this work. But hell, if, 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 if Carol's not gonna do it, if Ross not gonna do it, I hope that y'all will take a look at that document and y'all start sharing it. You start engaging with this, start having conversations with your people. If you white and you listening, you always ask me, what do we do? Sometime again, y'all get wrapped around the axle of the what if and just do something. So you know this work exists, how do you engage with it? Read it, be critical, write shit in the margins, print it out as staples or whatever, print it out at home. I don't know if anybody got, any guy that got printers anymore at home. I know I do, right here. But like, print it out, go over or pour over it on your, on your Kindle, pour over it on your, on your iPad, whatever, right? Read it. I don't know if you could do it on the Kindle, I'm sorry. I don't, I don't own a Kindle. But you know what I'm saying? Use your device, pour over the, the information, engage with it. You start championing it, you start, shoot, learn more about Amber's work, learn more about, uh, Dr. Knight and her family, learn more about Dr. Kim Butler Willis, learn more about these people who put so much time and energy into this work and lift up their voices, right? I think it's important for you to engage with this document, because the city council won't lift it up, they won't promote it, if they won't plan programming around it. And I understand it's in the early stages, since early stages of approval and then after approval what happens. Um, my worst fears is that it's gonna just land in a dustbin essentially, right? And then, um, the next crisis, the next flood or hurricane threat is just gonna make people forget about it. But this is your time right now to really lift it up and remind people about the importance of that work. And then when it does, when it does become, um, an agenda item during the next city council meeting, that's when you can also come and provide public comment. So there's things you can do to engage with this work and to, and to show support to some of these people on it. And a lot of these people, a lot of these subcommittee chairs work for institutions. Dr. Knight works for the Citadel, um, Alvin works for ACOM, um, more on that later. Um, Darren works for Avery, right? Um, there's ways for you to get, these people are not hiding is my point. They're not hiding, they outside. They outside, engage with them, lift them up, give them some comments, photo me email, say, hey, I saw your comments during that, that meeting, you did a really great job. I'm with you, what else can I do? And you know, just reach out, engage with it. Don't stay stuck on stuck, like start engaging with it. If city council ain't gonna lift it up and promote it unapologetically, we gotta be the ones to do it. We gotta be the ones to do it. Now, you know, it ain't perfect, but it's a start, it's a start. All right. Let me see AJ, what you said, one of your last comments and I'mma dip. Um, that is how you show black people that we want our work, uh, excuse me, that we and our work has value, excuse me. That's how we show black people that, uh, that us, that we as individuals and our work has value. Stop asking us to volunteer our time. Yes, please stop asking us to volunteer our time, um, and expertise, right? And then you like, please, that part, no more, no more, can I get you a cup of coffee? Can I pick your brand? I've been stopped that, but just chill out. Anyway, I'mma leave it there. This was fun. I wanted to talk about, um, yeah, I wanted to talk about what good work looks like, the, the Baltimore story from Color Lines, I think is something that folks out, you know, you can, you can DM me for it, I'll find it real quick for you, or you could just use Google